Call the meeting to order. Those willing and able, please stand for your pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, everybody mic'd up?
Yep.
Okay. And I would ask the firm to approve the agenda with the additions of 3.11, Letter of Resignation from Lori Isle Elementary Office Manager, which is 6.9 on the agenda. 3.12, approve Hunter Burnett as volunteer coach, which is 6.12. 3.13, city proposed library agreement, 10.1. And 3.14, the resolution relating to the election of the school board members and calling of the school district general election. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda with the additions?
Somewhat.
Second.
Katie and Randy, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the agenda with the additions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Move on to number four, public forum.
None.
None?
Did you assign in?
Yeah.
I think they want to talk.
Oh, they didn't say they wanted to. Oh, I'm sorry, Madeline did.
Sorry, yeah.
And Billy's on, but they're public forum. Oh, you're up.
We're in.
Yep. Sorry.
Do you start whenever?
Yeah.
Is that my turn? Hi, I'm...
I have a volunteer.
Am I ready to go now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Hi, I'm Madeline Weiss, and I'm here representing the volleyball team and also other athletics that use banners to honor their seniors. We're here because it was brought to our attention by Rick Zoller that our senior banners that we normally hang on the south wall of the gym is being moved to the east side above the visitor bleachers. We feel that above the bleachers isn't a good spot because they'll be hard to see and kids may mess with them. Mr. Zoller says that as of right now, they aren't sure where they're going to hang them, either on the soundboard or on the wall above the bleachers. We feel that either spot, they'll be hard to see and can be reached by kids sitting at the top of the bleachers where they normally sit for game days. We were told that they are being moved to the new location because they were taking paint off the walls and kids were messing with them. Upon hearing that, we thought that somehow the school slash janitors could come up with a way to permanently hang banners that wouldn't take the paint off the wall and could be a more efficient way of hanging them up. Similar to in the gymnastics room, the gymnastics team used command hooks where they just put all the banners on them year by year and they don't even mess with the hooks that hang them up. Banners have almost become a tradition these past years and we believe that it will stay that way. With a more permanent way to hang them, it will be easier to hang up and take down before the different seasons and won't take the paint off the walls. We also came up with the idea of hanging them on the north wall in the open area where the flag used to be. We thought that this would be a good spot since there's no paint designed to destroy, but it was turned down by Mr. Zoller because he said that he has something else to hang there and that he didn't like the idea of opposing team facing them to see. Next, it was also brought to my attention, along with other senior students, that at football games, we would not have the opportunity to stand at the fence on the bleachers. Mr. Zoller said that this year, we would have to stand in the bleachers itself and out of the walkway completely. The main reason being that there has been complaints about not having a clear path for others not in the student section to get through. This has been a tradition for the senior class to be able to stand in the fence for many years. We feel that after growing up and watching other seniors have this opportunity to stand by the fence, that we should also be able to after waiting for so long. As a solution, the senior class should get the chance to at least stand by the fence while being mindful of leaving space for others to get through. Myself and other students understand that having a clear walking path for others watching the game is important and should be kept in place. If it becomes a problem and this is not followed by the senior class, we understand that we will have to pay the consequences of standing out of the walkway and on the bleachers. I also want to propose that we bring back being able to go on the field after football games. This has been a tradition that was changed after the first year of COVID. From what I understand, the main reason of this change was because of janitorial reasons. To bring this back, I think that we could have a 15-minute clock set for students to go on the field, do the chant with the team, and take pictures and still be off the field by a set time. This 15-minute rule could also be put in place for after volleyball games and basketball games. If this 15-minute time limit is not adhered to, it can be taken away. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Anybody have questions for Madeline?
So where are you standing by the fence? Where the band used to be in that small set of bleachers or are you on top of the...
Um, where the student section has always been, like, on the far left side.
You've always gone there?
Yes. Mm-hmm.
Okay. I was just wondering. I don't see where that's a problem myself.
Could we set the clock for 20 minutes in the last five minutes as to clean up any debris that's on the field?
The kids clean it up?
If there's stuff on the field that the janitors are saying is a problem, then help pick it up?
I don't see where it's a problem on the field. I've been to lots and lots and lots of games over the years and everybody goes on the field. The parents like to be with their kids.
When if people come from out of town, you know, to see their kids? A lot of them, or, you know, grandparents and stuff like to go down there too and see them and...
So has the senior class or the senior class representatives met with the A.D. to discuss these issues?
Um, yes, we have discussed these issues with him.
But as your class representatives or as the...
Um, well...
Just a couple of kids?
It's just a couple of us seniors, I guess, so...
Or is this something like student council should be meeting with them as well because it affects more than just the senior class?
You know, all the kids want to go out there afterwards.
Well, not only that, but in the gym where stuff would be placed and...
So if you put these hooks in that would be permanent, why would it take the paint out? What do we put? That's just what I'm thinking. They make these things that hang glue on the wall or whatever and... I think it looks really neat that these kids' faces are up there. We know who they're... You guys have worked your butts off to be seniors. I don't know.
Well, and I think where they want to put them up there, it'd be very hard for especially older people to see them.
I mean, I suppose if somebody stands.
Right.
But we have a full gym, we're never going to see them.
I think the banners are made for people to see them, so we should put them in a spot that people can see.
And they are not cheap. I mean, people buy them and they're... I mean, you know.
Yeah.
Well, it's supporting your student athletes and the students of the districts.
I mean, if the band has something inside that they have, they could put stuff up there. I mean, it's not just athletics, it's everything in my book. It's all extracurricular activities, I mean...
Well, yeah, we're here to celebrate students and...
Yep. And extracurricular activities are part of teaching winning and losing and how to get along with teammates and it's not about winning all the time, it's being together.
So how do we want to proceed with this? I mean...
Did Mr. Zoller mention what he was going to hang on that one part?
He did not. He just said he had something planned to hang there in place of the flag.
Do we want to touch base with him to understand what that would be? I mean, in case it was something that needs to go there? I don't know.
Well, or even why they're being moved.
Yeah.
I would say is get your, I don't know if it would be the senior class committee or the student council and probably you, Cory, and A.D. together to come to a...
I agree.
To a solution.
I put the activities advisor from the board on there too.
Yeah.
You don't hardly do nothing, but it's something that's important to these kids and...
Right.
It's good.
Well, and we represent the kids as well as the...
Yes, we do.
The adults of the district, so... Yeah.
We might not get it right away, but we'll work as hard as we can. I mean, I think that's all we can do.
But I think you're going to want to do something before they put the banner. You know what I mean? You know? Kind of like coming in, but...
Soon you guys could schedule something with like the senior class or the student council and the A.D. and then the board.
I would say the activities handbook has an appeals process for generally... Usually it's eligibility or other types of issues, but I think that that committee could also hear this type of thing too, which I believe is you and Mr. Zoller. If there's a faculty member, there's a school board member that are part of that. So it'd be a logical place to...
To start.
To start with for that.
Yep.
I don't know about that or not.
Lance is the activities representative.
Am I?
Yeah.
That's what I thought, yeah.
If I am, I am, I don't know. Yeah, I think you are, Lance. Deb's got it somewhere.
Somewhere. You know, we'll find it.
Okay.
January meeting or...
We're taking away things that are so much fun for these kids, going on the field.
Yeah.
I mean, I've been out of school almost 40 years and it was fun back then. Then it's fun to see. It's fun to see the parents go out and rush the kids. I mean, nobody's getting hurt going down the chant, down to the river. There's nothing better than that. I mean, as a player, that was awesome. And as kids, it's got to be just as awesome if you're not on the team.
Yeah. And I think, you know, when COVID was full-blown, it was justified.
Yeah, understand.
I think we're hopefully through that and we can get back to more to normal and that this should be an acceptable practice.
Katie is actually the activities representative.
Oh, Katie.
It's your mom's fault.
Whoops. Okay, I'll get on that.
I also think this goes second-hand too with our initiative to, you know, kids... All students get into the games for free to just... It creates that culture of camaraderie and support as well, so I think it's...
It is one of our goals, yeah, definitely. It's a good point, too.
Well, thank you very much, Madeline.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to number five, 5.1, Pipestone Youth Baseball, Billy Quest.
Hey, guys, thanks for having me. I am Billy Quest. I am the former president of Pipestone Youth Baseball, currently just stepped down. Jeff Ike has now taken over my role as youth baseball president, but has not been able to make it tonight, so I'm speaking on behalf of youth baseball. I believe the plan in other meetings when we've been here was to reuse the dugouts from Brown School. And correct me if I'm wrong, but we're going to build new dugouts the way it sounds at the new field, so we'd like to use the old dugouts. At the swamp is where we'd like to see them put. So youth baseball is willing to donate, help with this project, and donate the money to pour the concrete for these dugouts to sit on. I got an estimate from Buffalo Ridge Concrete for about $5 to $550 for concrete work. I have talked with, I probably have to talk with you guys, but I have talked with Danny Moffett on the side just about things and projects. And in our conversation, he's like, well, us dads said we would even be willing to help do the work to pour the concrete to help save money. Or he's even, he's done concrete work in the past too. He said he'd be even willing to help with it too. So we would like to help with that cost and provide that, pay for all the concrete. I gave you guys, right, we have a little agenda here. If you can see the swamp, we have a couple pictures of the swamp. It's on your computers of where we'd like to place the dugouts. The reason we like to have these dugouts here, guys, is it looks more professional. It kind of finishes the field. Safety, you know? These kids that play there in the spring when it's raining and it's cold and it's windy, they have nowhere to get out of the elements of the weather. When they're playing there in the summertime and it's hot and sunny, they can't get out of the shade. So we really feel there's a need to get these things in yet this fall so they're ready to go in the spring. So we'd really like to see this move forward. The size of the concrete pad is about a 10 by 16 and 1/2 foot pad needed for each dugout. We went out and measured the dugouts from Brown and that 10 by 16 and 1/2 foot pad would fit those dugouts on very comfortably. A concern that we have is those dugouts have been flipped and rotated and they're upside down and they're pretty rough shape right now. So not sure if they're 100% salvageable or if we can use parts of them, you know, but they're going to have to get fixed. So I got a quote from the Lumbeeard and what it would cost to build a new dugout and it was about $1,800 to $2,500 per dugout to build. We would be willing to help a little bit towards that also. Give some money towards that, depending on how much is needed. We're willing to work with you guys, but the one is really, really bad. I think one is salvageable and one we might have to start over with because it's, the 4x4 is cracked in half and it's really in rough shape. Just to give a perspective on field usage, the summer of '22, we had roughly 110 kids participating in, this is just youth baseball. We had two first and second grade teams. We had three third and fourth grade teams, three fifth and sixth grade teams, and one seventh and eighth grade team. Just another perspective is, is there's two games a night plus practice, so you've got nine teams that are trying to use a very limited amount of fields right now currently with the two new fields not being ready. This year was tough. We had some kids go to Jasper to practice. We went over to Woodstock to try to practice. So we'd really like to see these fields, you know, hopefully they can be done and usable for next year. I know you guys are working hard at getting these new ones done and they look amazing. We really appreciate that. We've hosted two tournaments this summer, which has brought hundreds of people to town. We had our Water Tower Festival weekend and then we had our year-end tournament, which brought in, I believe, 16 teams to town that day. And the fields we use, we basically use every field possible in town that we can with Paulson 1, 2, and 3. We use Harmon Park and then we also use the Westview and the high school field and the A's field for those tournaments. So there is a need, a big need for these fields and the safety factor of getting Paulson 3 finished. Couple future needs that we'd like to maybe see at Paulson 3 is a scoreboard down there because that field is used quite often. Whether we can use the old scoreboard from the Brown School field? Not sure if your plans are to reuse that scoreboard at the new fields or if we have new scoreboards coming, but, you know, that's a... We'd like to see a scoreboard there also eventually. And then potentially maybe a portable outfield fence or something there to kind of tie that field in, just kind of complete it. You know, I know that grassy area is used for football and other things, but a portable fence would be nice there where when it's baseball, softball season, we could keep the balls in the park instead of rolling all the way out to the ditch. We are very proud of the baseball complex we have in this town and just want to try to clean them up. And we thank you guys for the use of them fields. I mean, you guys wouldn't have to let us use those fields. I know we're a city-run ballpark, but we do appreciate the use of them. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Any questions?
Paulson 3 and where?
That is the swamp. It's the one down off to the west of P1 and P2.
Okay.
It's a very nice field, it's just not completed. So we're trying to get that completed because we're going to, we use it quite often, so... Our donation, I guess, I can either write a check now or we can just, when the bills come in, we can just write the check at that time. I don't know if you want, if we needed to give it to you guys. I'm just asking, I guess, if you guys need to accept our donation or how that works as far as that goes. Do you need the check in hand or wait for bills to come in?
Say, don't we need to decide how much it's going to cost for the whole project and decide if we want to...
Right, if we want to allow them to proceed.
So facilities maybe or something?
What's that?
Facilities?
Facilities committee can review it.
You know, and you can get back ahold of me, I guess, and we can discuss more. And if I have to come back to another meeting, we can, I guess, just if it's way out of our budget. I mean, we kind of have a budget that where we want to try to stay within, but I mean, we want to spend, but we are willing to, we're willing to help because we'd like to see it get started this fall so it is done and ready. I guess another suggestion that I thought of, if these dugouts need to be replaced or fixed, are there shop classes? Are these projects the kids could do this winter and then just move them out there in the spring and bolt them down? You know, to try to get, I'm all in favor of the, you know, teaching the kids how to manual labor and do that kind of stuff, so... I think that's just a thought that, you know, at least I really want to get the concrete done this fall. So that's done, out of the way, and then we can always bolt them on in the spring if need be. So just a thought that I had. Might save some labor too, having the kids do it with the shop class can...
So really, all you're asking us to do is the dugouts?
And approve the concrete.
Approve our donation for the concrete. And then if you guys would be willing to put the dugouts there and fix what's, what needs to be fixed, I guess we would, you know, we would pay for the concrete. And then if you do need further funding, I guess, then we'll come back and discuss that at later time, how much more you need, but...
Yeah, we're going to need a tight price.
The...
Because right now, I mean, $1,800 to $2,500, that's a pretty good swing.
Well, the quote I got from Lumbeeard was $1,800. That's, they quoted me $1,800. I just, we said 25 just in case there was extra on there. I, you know, you always, I'd rather have it be stronger than lower. Have it be, say, 18 and it comes in at 23, well, you know. But they quoted me $1,800 and the Lumbeeard quoted me $550 for the concrete. They're going to give us concrete, or contractor pricing, give us a discount on the concrete.
What, Buffalo Ridge?
Buffalo Ridge, excuse me. Yes, Buffalo Ridge.
Do we need to determine if that one, if one is salvageable or could need...
The one looks like it's just upside down. It has some dents in it, the tin, but we can always replace the tin. But the structure of the wood looks fine. The benches look fine. The benches are separated, they're just sitting on the ground. And that's where a lot of the lumber is, is in the benches. And there's nothing wrong with them. It's just the, a few 2x4s and 4x4s that hold the roof on is what's damaged. And the tin, but they're sitting right out here, you know? I drove out here tonight before I got here and glanced at them again and, you know, they've... They're dented, but the guts of them are still, the benches are still okay, so...
So I would recommend we send it to the facilities committee. It would be next month when we would then bring it to the board again for a final approval.
I would say we probably have until October to do concrete work. So it'd have to be, you know, we'll hopefully get on it right away then at that point. I don't know if there's, you know, time is a little bit under the gun.
It is.
What's that?
September 26.
Yep.
We could, could we just approve the concrete donation at this point? Because even that's an improvement that we're not spending any money on.
True, it's a good point.
And then we can take our time to kind of review the dugout situation and plan and...
Do that.
That makes sense.
I'd make a motion to approve the concrete donation from Pipestone Youth Baseball.
Second. Okay. Any discussion?
Make a motion to approve the donation of concrete by Pipestone Youth Baseball.
Got that, Deb? Okay. Any further discussion? Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor to approve the acceptance of the concrete for dugouts signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. See, at least do the concrete work.
Sounds great. Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
And then we can get facilities together and put the other stuff.
Yes.
Sounds great. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Billy. Move on to number six, consent agenda. Before we get into the consent agenda, I'd like to recognize Christ the King Lutheran Church donation of $100 to the Wellness Room. And the Sons of American Legion Squadron Number Six donation to the High School Activities Football Camp of $1,000. And then Lori Isle, I'd like to recognize her for her 31 and 1/2 years of service to the district as she is resigning tonight, so... And I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented then.
Somewhat.
Second.
Katie and Randy. All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda as presented signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Move on to number seven, 7.1, review elementary budget year-to-date. That's you, Jackie.
It is me. Just updated the expenditures. I did add a second page this time where it details what we have left of the contingency. What we plan on spending from it is in the first column. What we have spent and the remainder is in the far right column.
Are there any questions for Jackie?
Just wondering, as a board, how long do we want to have this report on the agenda? Could we move it to the consent agenda? And then if something does change, then we can move it as a regular agenda item for that month? Or it's not a lot of time, but...
Well, I think because it's presented from Jackie, I think we should leave it in the financial part of it. That would be my recommendation.
Most of it's going to be gone here shortly.
I was going to say, shouldn't it be coming to an end pretty quick?
It's probably...
Yeah, I mean, I don't know when we're going to get bills, but, you know, the playground and ball fields and some of these summer projects are going to... So that's all going to, this should be getting zeroed out and closed out in the next few months, I'm hoping.
Works for me.
Are there any questions for Jackie? Any questions? Non-action item. Move on to 7.1.1, review new elementary building bills. Any questions for Jackie? Questions? That also is a non-action item. Move on to 7.1.2, approved treasures report for elementary building bond.
This is just basically the bond account and the cash that's remaining.
Any questions for Jackie on that?
I'll move to approve the building bond treasures report.
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor to approve treasures report for the elementary building bond signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Move on to 7.2, review of budget year-to-date.
This is still for fiscal year '22. In September, you'll receive one for fiscal year '23. We're at 97%. Last year at 94%. We may still have a few bills coming in, but we should be pretty close to being complete.
Okay.
Sometimes I still get bills in October, so...
Okay. Anybody else have questions? Questions?
Have the auditor said when they'll be coming? Just wondering.
No, Randy.
No.
Okay, that's also a non-action item. Move on to 7.3, approved treasures report for July. Jackie? There it is.
Currently have a cash balance of $7.3 million. Last year at this time, we had a cash balance of $7.3 million. Pretty close.
You're doing good, Deb.
Green light.
Green light. Are there any questions on the treasures report for July?
I'll move to approve the treasures report for July.
Second. Get them, Deb?
Yep.
Okay. All those in favor to approve treasures report for July signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. 7.3, approve regular bills for August.
Somewhat.
Second.
Katie, Randy.
Katie and Randy. Are there any questions on the bills? Any questions on the bills? We have first and second. So all those in favor to approve the regular bills for August signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. 7.5, approve high school activity bills for August. Are there any questions? Any questions? Hearing none. Can I have a motion to approve the high school activity bills for August?
Somewhat.
Second.
Katie and Amy. All those in favor to approve the high school activity bills for August signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Number eight, board forum and information. 8.1, board reports and updates.
As you can see, the policy committee is busy.
As you can see, the Policy Committee is busy.
Yes.
Earning your keep.
Yeah.
They had an option of two meetings or one. They said, let's just do one. So they did a lot.
Looks like it. How many was there?
Not even a lot.
Like forty-seven.
Okay.
Most aren't a big, a lot of big deals. It's just some statute changes, some new people working, that kind of stuff. Name changes.
Okay. Anybody else have anything I wish to offer?
Library Board meeting didn't meet this last month.
Okay.
Uh, Library Board didn't meet this month, this last month? Yeah.
And the negotiations met with the city. And went through the, the proposal they submitted to the district. And we talked to them about that as well as what our legal counsel has said. And she finds issues with it. And so there will be discussion further down in this, tonight's meeting about this proposal, so. Other than that, uh...
You got a couple administrator contracts you finalized.
Yep, we did Cory's and Melanie's contracts, which are on the agenda for tonight as well. That should be, I think, a puzzle.
Have we met at all with the paras or the AP custodian group?
That is coming up September eighth, I believe.
And how have those been going?
Well, we haven't met for a while. A month and a half. Anybody else have anything? Okay. That's non-action. Move on to number nine, Administrators' Report. Nine point one, Superintendent's Board Report. Kevin?
Currently, our enrollment is at about eleven oh six, which is ten more than we ended the year with. I have been seeing, we've had some in. I think I saw today there was thirty new students in and about eight out. So we're positive right now at the start of the year. And I would guess we'll probably be seeing a few more as we start landing, getting ready for school here. Some people wait till the very end, so. Today, we had our new teachers here, so they have today and tomorrow for orientation and induction, so. Getting older, they're getting a lot younger.
I know, I know a lot of women that are kids, I'm like, I mean, I'm really old.
Yep, so. And then next week, of course, we have our in-service open houses and, so, be a, be a busy week next week. Lot of activity, a lot of people in. Staff back, we'll be good to get going, so. Looking forward to that. And that's about what I've got.
Well, I guess Katie and I did come and meet with the new teachers and have dinner with them. And Melanie and Cory and Jim.
It's very nice.
It was nice to sit and visit and everybody introduce themselves. It's nice to see faces coming back from the area.
Yeah, it is very nice. I agree.
So.
Just made me feel...
Yeah. Anything else?
I have nothing else.
Then we'll move on to nine point two, Principal's Board Report.
Good evening, everyone. Yes, it is a little humbling when former students come back through and are not working here. Awesome, but humbling. Yeah, just a couple of things. Mr. Anderson alluded to a lot of the, the things that are, are the buildup. We're kind of, I look at it as week two of the four-week buildup to day one with students. And, and that's where we work with new teachers. And so did a little bit with middle and high school teachers today. Thankfully, our staff is in place, so it seems like some years we have the late August resignation and we're super scrambling. But not, not the case at the moment, so things are good there. Just a couple of things. In the real short term, we've got our senior event on Wednesday night. We're doing that here, most likely in the auditorium. And that starts at six-thirty. And then our freshman orientation is next Monday. So I think I let you know about those last time, but they're coming soon. And then we've got Article Open House on Wednesday with several different meetings available for our parents and our students, along with picking up materials and all the good stuff that comes with that. So that's really what's going on in the middle and high school in terms of just preparing for a lot of the meetings, that orientation with, with staff, or, excuse me, with students. And then in-service meetings with, with staff and getting them up to speed with the things that we have coming for the school year, so. Unless you have questions, that's, that's my report.
Does the fall athletic schedule look like you've got a pregame rosters for everything? Or haven't you heard?
I haven't heard fully, but I, I do believe some of our activities are low in numbers. I, I don't know exactly, and maybe Mr. Dillows can correct me, but I don't believe we have any juniors out for volleyball.
Zero.
Zero, which is really odd to have no kids in a grade level. So I, I don't know what your overall numbers are, but I think football's maybe consistent with what they've done, which isn't a huge number, because football is a numbers game more so than, than most of the other sports. So, yeah, but I would say that's kind of, it's up and down, but it feels probably more down overall.
So how are you coming with an extra FFA teacher besides Chrisa? Chrisa? Because she told me she's only gonna be there like maybe an hour a day?
Right, when you look at her contract, she's contracted for one, one hour a day. And that's, that's all I could get, a commitment from her. And what we did is we shifted our welding program to be run through our contract PSEO program, similar to how we do carpentry. So that's, we typically do welding in the spring, but we're doing it right now, started today. And they're actually using our facility for the first quarter, and then they'll use Minnesota West facility in the second quarter. So, so we moved it to a PSEO class, which means we had to do some, just more light work with our students to get them enrolled and, and started. Because not, not every senior wants to start today. But we do, we do have seniors and juniors in, in the classroom now with, with that program and with carpentry started this afternoon. So, so that's how we've offset. So we lost classes. And as we meet with, with parents, that's, that's been the thing, is we lost some of the things that we were hoping to offer when we presented that to students last February and March. And now it's, we don't have some of those offerings. We've opened up some other ones in the fine arts area, just to try, excuse me, to try to bring balance to, to a schedule and course offerings that are of quality to kids. So for this year, I don't anticipate any, any changes in the ag program.
Because I was told, just by some people at the fair, there's like thirty-three FFA openings, ag teacher openings in the state. That's a lot.
I believe that.
So that kind of explains what's going on. I just kind of was wondering how things were going.
Ag is one of those super high areas, you know, math. We had to change some things in our math department. So, you know, thankfully, Mrs. Anderson came back part-time on retiree hire, but we still lost some classes, so we had to shift and lose things there. And that's just kind of the nature of, of what we're up against at the moment. And, and hopefully, you know, that starts to change as, as the need for teachers is more prevalent and the legislative, legislature can get hopefully a little more active in supporting our needs in those areas. But, you know, math, special education, I mean, there's hundreds of special education openings. And I know we're fighting area, everybody's fighting for the same people. So it is encouraging when former students from here or people who live in our community are coming back to, to teach, regardless of if they're a brand-new teacher or if they've been out for a while and move into the profession. So that's, that's kind of what it takes, I think, to, to really support schools when there's so much, so many vacancies.
Okay. Anything else, Cory? Your turn, Jen.
Good evening. I'm just gonna piggyback off from Kevin and Cory. It was fun to hang out with our new teachers, and so I had four of them that I got to visit with today. Coming up on Wednesday, August thirty-first, is our elementary open house. During that time, from ten AM to three PM, we have scheduled conferences that parents are able to visit with their child's teacher one-on-one. In the evening, from four to seven PM, that's more of a come-and-go time. During our open house, back-to-school time, there'll be vision and hearing screening going on. Students will get their pictures taken, bus information, food service information, and the rec center will be there to visit with that. I've been working on some schedule updates, so I've got kind of the master schedule done. I worked on, you know, the lunch, recess, special stuff. I went through the building, updated all of the tornado and fire safety plans with that at the elementary. Working on some Title I applications, or actually all the title applications that are due on September first. And then just kind of filling our last few open positions that are for paras.
Any questions for Jen? Anything? Okay, thank you. Melanie, your turn.
Good evening, everyone. I was excited to attend the MDE back-to-school conference with the admin team on August first. It was a good time to be all together again and, and learn a few new things, be reminded of a few old things. We had thirteen of our fourteen teachers here today, our new teachers. Thank you again, Katie and Jeff, for attending our lunch. They will be back tomorrow for another full day. I am putting the final touches on next week's back-to-school in-service, which is August twenty-ninth through September first. Curriculum is still arriving and still being delivered. And I, I sense that it'll be coming in right up until school starts. So shipping delays and things like that are still prevalent. And when things arrive, they arrive, and that's all I can do. The CPI, Initial CPI, Crisis Prevention Institute Training took place last week for two days or a day and a half. And then our refresher CPI training also took place last week for paraprofessionals and designated certified staff. Today, we had middle school, high school math curriculum training take place, AM session and a PM session for our new curriculum in grade six through Algebra I. And then coming in September, I will be posting requests to parents and community members for committee membership on the following committees. The World's Best Workforce slash Curriculum District Advisory Committee. The American Indian Ed Parent Advisory Committee. And the Community Education Advisory Council. So look for those things to get out and with directions on how to join if you would so choose to. So, do you have any questions for me? Oh, and one last thing. We had a data dig for our leadership teams, the elementary building leadership team, the middle school leadership team, and the high school leadership team last Thursday. We spent a good, almost four hours looking through the MCA's data. I can't report publicly on it yet, but we can look at it. But we have, we have good news to share eventually, so.
So when does it become public data?
On the twenty-fifth.
Of August?
August, yep. So it will be shortly.
So then we will be presented in September?
However, it lands in your, in your calendar, yes.
I think we also have a, a meeting set up too with certified staff at the same time. For around then. Meet, confer.
Yep. Yep.
Okay. So your curriculum, are you getting, stuff is coming in like it kind of should, or is...
We're just waiting on a couple of things that are backordered, like the eighth-grade math books aren't here yet and they're consumable texts, but we're able to be online. So if they wouldn't show up, we're still able to access everything online. And then the six-through-eight science consumable text, they ship on your anniversary date. So our anniversary date is this week, and so it'll, it's still sitting in the, the shipping area, so we'll see when it gets here. So, and they too have online access, so if they wouldn't have a book in front of them immediately on the first day, we do have access online. So that's about all I'm waiting for right now.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? Okay, that's non-action. Thank you. Uh, move on to number ten, Discussion Items. Ten point one, City Proposed Library Agreement. Okay. You guys have seen the agreements. I guess one of the questions the Negotiations Committee had is, you know, where do we want to go from here? Do you want us to continue to try and negotiate an agreement? Personally, myself, I would negotiate up to December thirty-first if it was gonna make a difference and we could come to an agreement.
That's what I'd like to see.
I would agree with that, too.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that was our intent to start with, and...
I don't feel like we're moving in a forward direction, though.
It's, it's stalled.
I mean, that's what I...
So I guess, you know, if you guys have got some ideas what we need to do.
I mean, it's all about two parties coming together and being, you know, giving a little on both sides. And I don't, you know, there isn't a whole lot more you can do about it. I mean, that's my thought. I do think the two separate employers is gonna be a kind of a mess. I think it's gonna be hard for people to know who's in charge of who, and I just, I just think that could be a problem. I guess that's my one concern about the whole situation.
I agree. Well, it still gets back to the liability issue. Right. We have went nowhere with that. And any person you talk to that runs a business, if they don't have control of their employees, you're done. Because who's the first person they're gonna sue if something happens? It's the school district.
Right.
And that's, we can't afford that? Um, and whether we could afford it or not, I mean, the district needs to look out for the taxpayers of the district. The taxpayers of the district also include the city of Pipestone. It ain't that we don't want to...
That's who we answer to.
It ain't that we don't want to do this. We're trying, but I missed the last meeting, but I think we're just in a big stalemate and... I don't know. It's something that needs to get taken care of.
Yep.
And it's December thirty-first is D-Day. Correct?
Yep.
And your last meeting, did you pick another time to get together?
No, we were gonna bring this to the, to our board. And have you guys look at it and get you guys' opinion of, do we want to try and continue? Or do we want to say, you know, we don't think we're gonna come to a resolve? Let it expire in, in December, or... To sit down and talk don't cost much.
No, but it is people's time, and, I mean, it does.
It is.
I mean, I'm not in the committee, but it's still, it is a time commitment. And if you're not going anywhere, and I feel like there's been a lot of back and forth, I mean, is it really?
Yep.
I don't know.
I'm glad to hear that the committees are, again, talking. Because I felt like there for a time, it was just proposals coming to boards. And I thought, I guess the intention of the committees was that whatever's coming to the board is gonna be agreed on by both parties, and it's a simple approval, so. That's how, I guess, I'd like to proceed, is nothing comes to either board. I mean, I can't speak for the city council, but I guess I wouldn't want to see anything come here until it's agreed to by both parties from the committees, and then it's brought forward as a recommendation.
Otherwise, it's just arguing back and forth about it.
Yeah.
Right. Well, my recommendation, and if somebody wants to make a motion or whatever, but my recommendation is we, we still reach out to them and try it. We've brought it here now.
Yep.
I think the consensus of the board is, you know, we gotta at least try some more.
Well, and we've spent this much time on it already. Well, and we've spent this much time on it already, what's another three months? I mean, we might as well see it through to the end and do, do diligence on our part to try to make it work.
Yes. Okay.
They did send a proposal that we need to give an answer on.
Well, I make a motion that we do not accept the city's proposal based off of the information provided from our legal counsel. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do you want me to read the reasons put into the record?
Yeah, I think that'd be helpful.
The proposal by the city did not reference in-kind credit for the facility itself. The proposal does not recognize in-kind credit of the facility and is not credited for the assets purchased after 1991. Basically, what that means is, is that they're not recognizing the monetary value of the facility itself. We've had this agreement, and we're giving this in-kind, and they're, they're not acknowledging it as a, as a value.
Can we give some examples of what in-kind would be, just so it's...
Well, just the space itself is, is a dollar amount.
Yeah, custodial services that we provide.
We do provide that dollar amount, it's the facility.
The facility.
It's the, it's the building that is not acknowledged. The proposal proposes two separate employers of the staff. The proposal does not address liability for torts or property damage, and the district cannot delegate responsibility for employment policies to another entity. We can make agreements as a district and will enforce those policies, but they can't stipulate that someone else has policies, we, we can't do that, so... Those were the primary issues, the major issues with the proposal that they sent. Those were shared with the city. And they said they wanted to hear from the board, so...
Because they didn't feel that the negotiations team had the authority to yea or nay there. So, we have a first and a second to reject their proposal based off of what our lawyer has said. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor to reject the city's proposed library agreement signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Okay.
I will reach out and let them know that we still are open to sitting down and continuing discussions.
Yeah, definitely.
Request a day.
Okay.
So, we'll move on to number 11, Board Action 11.1. These are first reading of policies.
All right. Ready? Let me, let me go through here, these, these policies that are, you're getting your first reading. Policy 417 is chemical use and abuse policy. There's a couple of things that we have to get clarified. One is, we have to have a drug-free awareness program for our employees, and also, there's the new... These edibles.
Yeah, it was passed.
And the law was passed that... So, MSBA has sent out something, and, and we got to get that language in here. It just came out after our committee even met it, so I need to get that in there, and we'll get that in for the second reading. Policy 506, student discipline. We had to update three procedures, or procedures for three items. I've met with the principals, and we've got them, so they will be in next, the next time. The wellness, policy 533 is the wellness, we need a coordinator and a committee for our wellness, which kind of has, with COVID, we kind of went away, so... But I think the, probably recruit one of the school nurses to help out with some of that, and we'll, we'll get that, but I need to get that in there. Policy 603, curriculum development, needs an advisory committee, and we are going to put in the World's Best Workforce Advisory Committee that kind of takes care of a lot of this anyway, so this would be one. I think the big thing with curriculum development is, is that you need to have an opportunity for the public and parents to, you know, be a part of those committees and discuss what is being taught and where things are at, so... That, that, that's something that we need to have there. Policy 701 is not in here, I've moved that up. We need to clarify implementation of the budget. We, was a couple of things that, that we want to just clarify, so I'm pulling that out of the one reading and putting it up into two, because we found something that we needed to get clarified in there. 714 is our, well, 750 is our current fund balance policy that was written by business manager Kennedy. And now MSBA has gotten on board with a MSBA model policy. Their policy is 714. As you can see, we've kind of gleaned the two together, and so we're going to be recommending that we retire 750 and implement 714, and it's kind of a hybrid of, of both, but our current policy is, covers all the bases. It's like the business manager knew what she was doing with fund balance policies. Probably even better, probably even better than MSBA's.
I like mine better.
Yeah, because it's got some explanations in there.
You should have sold it to them and charged them.
Yeah, well, we'll see what they see, so... So, those are the policies that we are giving our first reading, and that's all they need right now.
Okay, anybody have any questions on those policies?
The policy committee has gone through all of these two.
Yep.
Amy missed out on that night.
Sorry guys.
Yeah.
Any questions? Okay, that's a non-action as its first reading. Now, we will move on to 11.2, Approval of Policies.
I will, I will, yeah, we'll talk each, no. The policy committee has gone through all of these, most of them have statutory updates, there is no significant changes in the meanings. Some of these policies, we actually even did last April, and then a new statute came in, so they're being updated. That's why we ended up doing so many of them, but I will succinctly go through them. Okay, here we go. Policy 101, The Legal Status of the School District. Policy 102, Equal Educational Opportunity Policy. Policy 204, School Board Meeting Minutes. Policy 208, Development, Adoption, and Implementation of Policies. Policy 209 is the Code of Ethics for School Board Members. Policy 210, Conflict of Interest for School Board Members. One thing there that we wanted to point out was, is in the past, a school board member could only make about $8,000 with the school district. They've increased that to $20,000, so all of you can start substitute teaching now and helping us out. There we go.
There you go Lance, the winner job for you.
Policy, Policy 401, Equal Employment Opportunity. Policy 402 is Disability Nondiscrimination. Policy 404 was Employment Background Checks and Form. Policy 410, Family and Medical Leave. Policy 415, Mandated Reporting of Maltreatment of Vulnerable Adults. Policy 418, Drug-Free Workplace, Drug-Free School. Policy 420, Students and Employees with Sexually Transmitted Infections and Diseases and Certain Other Communicable Diseases and Infectious Conditions. Policy 504, Student Dress and Appearance. Policy 508, Extended School Year of, for Certain Students with IEPs. Policy 509, Employment of Non-Resident, Enrollment of Non-Resident Students. Policy 514, Bully Prohibition. Policy 515, Protection and Privacy of Pupil Records and a Form. Policy 521, Student Disability Nondescration and some, and a Form. Policy 522 is Title IX, Sex Nondiscrimination Policy, Grievance Procedure and Process. Policy 524, Internet Acceptable Use and Safety. This is the second reading of that policy. Much of that included the cybersecurity issues and the data privacy of students. I believe we have all of those things in order, and that policy is ready to go. Policy 525, Violence Prevention, applicable to students and staff. Policy 527, Student Use of and Parking of Motor Vehicles, Patrols, Inspections, and Searches with a Form. Policy 528, Student Parental, Family, and Marital Status, Nondiscrimination. Policy 529, Staff Notification of Violent Behavior by Students. Policy 532, Use of Peace Officers and Crisis Teams to Remove Students with IEPs From School Grounds. Policy 601, School District Curriculum and Instruction Goals. Policy 602, Organization of School Calendar and School Day. Policy 616, School District System Accountability. Policy 620, Credit for Learning. Policy 701, Establishment and Adoption of School District Budget, which is the one we pulled out, so I didn't have to read that one. Policy 702, Accounting. Policy 703, Annual Audit. Policy 706, Acceptance of Gifts. Policy 707, Transportation of Public School Students. Policy 708 is Transportation of Non-Public School Students. Policy 709, Student Transportation Safety. Policy 710, Extracurricular Transportation. Policy 721, Uniform Grant Guidance Regarding Federal Revenue Sources. Policy 722, Public Data Requests. Policy 801, Equal Access to School Facilities. Policy 802, Disposition of Obsolete Equipment and Material. And Policy 806 is Crisis Management. Again, the committee went through each one of these policies, reviewed them, and no substantive changes to them, just mostly statutory or grammatical work that was done with these policies.
Okay, does anybody have any questions?
Good job, policy committee.
Well, I got one question.
You're just jealous Randy.
522, Title IX, Sex Nondiscrimination Policy, Grievance Procedure and Process. How, or does that cover the issues that you hear at so many schools with transgender and those groups?
I, what do you mean in those?
Well, so, Title IX, you can't discriminate based on sexual orientation, so if you have this person that comes in and says, "Well, I'm a girl today," so nondiscrimination according to Title IX, what do we allow?
Oh, um, I think that's where these types of things, that's why this policy's there, that if that situation presents itself, we'll follow our policy.
The grievance process.
And the grievance process, the thing with this, in, in the investigations, they've made it so that you almost have to bring in a neutral party to do that for you. It used to be where the principal would get involved and probably do the, do the, whatever, you know, the, the study and an investigation and a determination, where now you probably have to bring in a neutral outside party that would complete the investigation, probably would be our attorney, or like we do for an expulsion. Minnesota's, you know, we try to respect everyone's rights and where they're at, and... I can pass that one off to Mr. Strasser and see, but we don't have any issues with that. I think we'll deal with it if it comes.
Hopefully, we don't.
Right.
Okay.
But, we do have to be respectful of everyone.
Right, yep.
Who they are, and, and so we'll, we'll deal with that as it comes forward. We have had to deal with some issues, and it's gone very well, so...
Okay. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve 11.2, all the policies listed? Solo. Lance?
Second.
And Amy. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor to approve the policies as presented for the first reading signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. 11.3, Approved Transportation Contract with Southwest Minnesota Christian.
Each year, we renew our contract with Southwest Christian. We are required to transport students in our school district boundaries. They come over, we just pay them for their miles and things inside our district, so this is an annual contract that's in order.
Are there any questions?
I'll move to approve transportation contract with Southwest Minnesota Christian.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Katie. All those in favor to approve the transportation contract with Southwest Minnesota Christian signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. 11.4, Approval of Crisis Management Plan of Action.
The, you just passed the crisis management policy, the policy says you have to have a plan. So, this is a plan that we review every year. The admin team went through, and we've got everything in there updated as, and we are ready for the school here, so... We recommend the board approve the plan as presented. We did a lot of work last year with the new building, and so this was just kind of some updating and tweaks of things, so...
Are there any questions? Any questions? Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve the crisis management plan of action?
Same.
Katie? I'll second. All those in favor to approve the crisis management plan of action signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. 11.5, Approved Contract for Melanie Wellnitz, Director of Curriculum Teaching and Learning and Community Ed Director Position.
Just, the negotiating committee met with Ms. Wellnitz and went over things. There is a change, and I know that last month, Mr. Plaine announced that Ms. Wellnitz is our new community ed director, but it's officially happening. We, we did update her contract with the addition of community education. We are lengthening her contract to a full 260-day contract to accommodate those extra duties. We felt that, I think the committee expressed what they expected and wanted to get for community education, so Ms. Wellnitz is fired up and ready to go. So...
Any questions? Questions? Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve the contract for Melanie Wellnitz?
Second.
Get them to.
Yep.
Okay. All those in favor to approve the contract for Melanie Wellnitz, Director of Curriculum Teaching and Learning and Community Education Director, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. 11.6, Approval of the Contract for Cory Strasser, Middle High School Principal. Okay?
Committee, negotiations committee met with Mr. Strasser and came to acceptable terms for his contract.
And this, normally, we would have the elementary as well, but since she's new to the position and still has some licensure to fulfill that she's been separate this year.
I'll move to approve contract for Cory Strasser, Middle High School Principal.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor to approve the contract for Cory Strasser, Middles, Middle School, High School Principal, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
There's one more thing.
Resolution.
You got something.
Oh, we got that addition.
That's right.
Resolution.
Take that one off.
Did he gavel that thing?
Yeah.
Hey, did I?
Wow, that was pretty quick.
No, I didn't gavel the end of meeting, the gavel was for the...
Okay, all right.
Okay, resolution relating to the election of high school board members and calling the school district general election.
We have a school board election. Three, three positions are open. We have five people who have put their name in the hat, so this is calling for the election.
Is it a roll call vote because it's a resolution, or just a motion to approve?
Is it a roll call, or just a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for the November election, school board election.
Second.
And Katie. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of the resolution relating to the election of school board members and the calling of the school district, district general election signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Hearing none, motion passes, making adjournment.